To order, City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or call it executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We will go to Agenda Item 2, which is Work Sessions, to discuss FY '23, '24 proposed budget and provide feedback to our city manager. Madam City Manager?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tracy, do they have this sheet in front of them? So we are obviously in the thick of budget planning, and this is your opportunity at this workshop to ask any questions related to the budget or any clarification that's needed. We do have some additional information on the no new revenue rate that was requested by Councilmember Kirkland, and so I will yield the floor to anybody who has any questions regarding the budget.
Council, it's your opportunity to ask the city manager a question you may have about the budget.
Are we, is there not going to be a presentation? We're just going to throw our questions out?
Okay.
Councilmember Kirk, I mean Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
So my question is about the sales tax revenue increases. This is page 19, and there's a chart on the sales tax history. And is there a kind of a known or accepted model? I don't know who I'm asking this question of, by the way. I'm asking you? Okay. Is there a kind of a known or accepted model for how sales tax grows? Like, for instance, you've got population that enters into it, you know, are there other factors? I mean, like, how? I guess what I'm saying is that it seems like it would be safe for this next year's bar to be slightly higher, I mean, you know, about that much higher, and that would fit the trend that you see there. But without, you know, I didn't want to go do a linear regression on it and propose a new number. Instead, I wanted to discuss, you know, what is...
Yeah, there's more than, there's more factors. One thing is that we've always been conservative and that we've always used it when it comes in excess as one time, and that has been our pattern or our conservative routine. The other one is, we started leveling off this year, which made me want to be conservative because in the past, we've actually had a spreadsheet that tracks new businesses going in, going in, and how much sales tax we think, you know, that business is kind of like this business, so it might generate about this much annual sales tax. I don't have any of those for next year, so there would be no reason for me to be more aggressive, so I stayed conservative. But I would say, I don't know that there's any, any best practice model. I think finance directors in different municipalities kind of use their historical information plus what they've been given for the future. We really haven't been given a lot of commercial that's going to go online next year that I know of, so I just didn't want to step out with too much more than, than what we did.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, I could help with that a little bit? And of course, it might just be more of a question, but, you know, we talked last year about the online sales and weren't sure to what extent that was coming, or do we have any clarity on that? And if so, then it seems to me like they're like a family of four, you know, could likely be counted on to produce X dollars.
This amount, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have like questions throughout this whole thing.
Let me get my book.
Yes, because I thought you were like going to present, and then I could chime in where needed and...
It's the same presentation as last week. I mean, she could do it, but it's the same presentation as last week.
Last year, we got like another whole presentation.
Oh, no, we're not trying to do that. We started early this year for, we started super early this year, actually, for this very reason, so that when you have a workshop and the questions are clear, as we get closer to the end, we've like narrowed the focus instead of sort of being shotgun all the way around.
So y'all bear with me.
No, for sure.
We're here.
I'm on page 23, Asset Management. So are we, do we hire someone for asset management, or is that contracted out?
So right now, we, we, we do asset management in-house. So this is an engineering request. It was in this year's budget. We just never got to it because of all of the projects that are going on right now, but this is to actually elevate us and get us more on the asset management. And when we talk about that, we talk about infrastructure, like what we have in the ground, what we have building-wise, what we have to really start looking at the assets that we have and, and starting to really analyze those replacement schedules. And so this is a more of a robust software program that would actually take all that infrastructure and track it better. Right now, we don't really have a database. We have, well, we have multiple databases. Water, wastewater, tracks their infrastructure, you know, obviously, the finance department tracks all assets, buildings, vehicles, all of those things, but this would be more of a holistic, and it would be built to more serve that purpose of when does it need to be replaced, and the maintenance of it, and all of those things. It would be tracked within a software.
And with the, who would be managing that? The GIS person that we brought on?
Engineering, I mean, there'd probably be multiple people that would, would get into it. I mean, I would assume that finance would as well, but engineering and utilities and...
So right now, we essentially have an inventory.
Yeah.
What we don't have is, she probably has a depreciation schedule for buildings.
I do.
But what we don't have in our asset management, and here's the asset, here's when it's due to replace, here's what needs to be repaired, here's when we did it, so that we're not duplicate ordering. We have a better holistic view of everything that we have and how we can better take care of it.
More from an infrastructure point.
Go ahead.
But it, but it, but it's also preventative maintenance process. It ensures that the, the sustainability of a particular asset and when we should replace it, because you want to have it optimal performance. We don't need a poorly performing asset that's costing us more money than replacing it at some appropriate time.
And the streets would go in here, too. I mean, that's a big, huge part.
Absolutely.
But our water lines, our wastewater lines, utilities, streets, all of those things.
Thank you. So on development code updates, I just was wondering, I know there's no impact to the general fund, but at one time, I heard the development meetings are winding down. Are those going to continue to be ongoing? Because this talks about input to staff. That suggestion made by developers and contractors, is that input going to still be from this development group, plus any new development we have coming in, or just are we leaning off of the developer meetings eventually and just speaking with developers outright and taking their suggestions?
No, actually, you have an item at your next council meeting that there's a resolution on the table directing me to begin that process by Councilmember Crouch and Councilmember Plunkett. And so development, what we had on the ground has slowed, but, I mean, just yesterday, well, let me see, this week, there's a proposed project with 1,100 units. There's another, I mean, we had two annexations the other day, so I don't think we're slowing down. And add the, add the water issues that are surrounding us, if anything, we're going to get even busier. And so we, what we have from a contract perspective, our third-party contracts in development services, we did bring everything in-house, but we still have third-party contracts we can rely on. So if inspections pick up or plan review picks up, plat review, engineering review, we still have those on the backend. So staff, our internal staff can still really focus on some code.
Well, so I know, I'm not talking about development slowing down. I know that's not slowing down. I meant the meetings you were having with the developers.
They have slowed down to quarterly. They've slowed down to quarterly.
So they're still quarterly?
They were month, actually, they were bi-weekly at one point, and then we went to monthly, and now they're quarterly.
Okay. And that will just be ongoing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, let's see, on page 25. So page 25 talks about raises, if you will, and it talks about the 2.5 step, 3% cost of living, and then a 2.5 step merit. Is there still a cap on the merit? Because the cost of living is just a 3% cost of living every annually, right?
Well, it's whatever we, I mean, it's different each year, so it's whatever council approves in the budget each year.
Right, but the 2.5 merit increment stops. They, it was capped out, if I remember correctly. They capped the, do the employees cap out on how much they can increase?
There is a grade in step, so they could grade out on that. They could step out on their grade, like they could get to the end of their grade and...
For their title?
Right.
For their title. So what if someone hits that? Because the whole point of a lot, a lot of this piece of it was staying competitive with other cities.
So historically, we have paid a lump sum. It just doesn't increase their, like, if they're stepped out, it doesn't increase their hourly. They would get a lump sum that was the value of the 2.5%, but they wouldn't change, their hourly rate wouldn't change, because unless the scale actually goes up with the COLA, the hourly wouldn't change.
So they would get some like a bonus?
They would get a lump sum.
And a bonus?
Well, ideally, you should never have somebody at the end of their step. You should have given additional responsibilities or additional training to have them move up into the next step. Nobody should ever be at the ceiling. It's just not good HR practice.
So, but I'm aware, I thought we had discussed in previous meetings that some people had capped out.
Not that I'm aware of.
There was a few.
It was prior to you, I believe.
There was a few, but I don't know that the last shift, HR would be able to answer that question, but there was a few that had gone to the full, but the last adjustment she made might have switched some of those around and given them, you know, more steps at the end.
More steps at the end. So annually, are they told what they could do to get more? Because she's saying add additional responsibilities. So at the end, when they cap out, are they given an explanation? If you get this certification?
I mean, I can't answer that, but I'm sure that they are. HR would have to answer that question. If I had an employee, obviously, I would be discussing with them, you know, here's where you are, this is the job you're in, you know, in order to take on responsibilities, maybe take a promotion to adjust you on the, on the grade, but I can't personally answer that question for you.
No, I think Tanya may be coming.
Yeah, I just text her.
HR's on her way.
HR is here. Before she comes up to the podium, is the 3% COLA increase, is it just an arbitrary number, or is that based on CPI or anything?
It's, it's, I think it's what we could work into the budget with this step. We also had a rate pass on healthcare, so it's a combination, I think it's a combination of things, and I, I think we're competitive.
Good, thank you.
Yes, and it is based on that. And when we do have employees that get to the end of the pay range, yes, we do explain that. Sometimes, you know, in positions such as maybe the building custodian or equipment operator, where they're at the senior level and there isn't, it doesn't happen very often, she's right, when people can have training and move up the ladder, then they do move up the pay scale. But every now and again, it does happen. But the good thing with us is that we do stay, remain competitive. When our pay schedule moves, when we get the COLA, the whole scale moves, and so that puts them further this way. So it doesn't happen very often.
And then they are, but she's, as Tracy stated, they would be given a lump sum if they're, if they're capped out?
Yes, absolutely.
And do they have to ask for that lump sum?
No.
Or it's automatically?
We automatically do it.
Okay.
On their anniversary date.
Okay, in addition to the COLA?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
Okay, I think that might be all in that section, that is. Okay, so let's see if I have anything in fund summary. So fund summary, page 44. I actually think I answered my, my own question as I read further for that.
Congratulations.
Let's see, page 50. Oh, yes, page 50, the solid waste contract. Can we get an update on that? Because last I remember, they, they re-upped for that additional year about the same time, and then we were going to decide if we were going to do an RFQ or renegotiate a contract.
So we currently have an extension through August of 2024.
August 2024, okay, thank you. And on page 52, donation in-kind 250, for what, what was that for? Don't remember?
That was from actuals of 22. Sometimes we get money, sometimes people send in donations.
Into the city?
If they don't make it specific, we put it in general donations. Now, we get, not a lot, but we get some every now and then.
Every now and then, that's sweet.
If they designated it, like if they specifically say, this is a donation for parks, then it goes in the designated fund.
Okay, didn't know that. Transfers then, transfer in electric and transfer in the library board.
Mm-hmm.
Recollection on what that was for?
Oh, yeah. Well, the electric we've talked about, that's their lieu, property tax in lieu of. It's one of those transfers that we have started tiering down. If you look at the five-year fiscal forecast, you'll see that that transfer is reducing each year. It's a transfer that most cities use if they run an electric company to subsidize their general fund. We would actually like to get away from at least that being too high. It might not have been last year, but it might have been the year before. We actually changed the finance policy to never exceed 11% of what revenue they bring in, so we're way below the 11%, and we're projecting to make it go down each year. The library board is just to subsidize the summer reading program out of the donations that come into the library board.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me see what else I have in this section. Okay, page 58, the K-9 unit startup. So I had asked, before I even came a council, a council member about K-9 units, and I was told that they were very expensive, you had to have, the officer had to have specialized training, and then it was something that the city could not maintain. That was 2021? So the $14,500, what this, it says startup.
It is, and that was, that was a request by Chief Stefanik.
I was hoping she was here to talk about it.
Yeah, she firmly believes that it is actually a morale booster. Her officers have been sort of chomping at the bit, so to speak, to have a K-9 unit, and so we found it in the budget to be...
I agree. Like, I, that was why I asked about it in 2021. I was just told that the, the cost to maintain it was so...
But you also had, so I would say you have a different view also just in changes with different leadership.
Yeah.
And I would say that that's probably part of that. But the $14,000 gets the dog, and it does the initial training. And then we also put in the budget, I think there was $4,000 a year for just like supplies and food and additional training. But she did feel like it was part of the package of trying to recruit, like we have a K-9 unit, you know, it's just something different that, that might allow the officers to kind of move around and get the different training when you offer different units.
No, I completely agree, and I'm glad that that's happening. I was just wondering what the $14,000 was, because the other thing that was noted was that the office, they had...
Just the dog.
You couldn't just be an officer and work with the dog.
It's the dog and the training and the cage that has to go in the vehicle.
So where are we looking at then, hiring or training one of our current officers?
Training existing officers.
Okay.
And there's already sort of a...
They're very excited.
Yeah, they're very excited. There's a run on who gets to do it.
Yeah, they're already fighting over the dog, and we don't even have it yet.
And the dog's not here yet, huh?
They want Jack in the meantime.
I offered Brixton at the time, my dog. Okay, so I'm on to page 66. Am I reading right? My eyes are really blind. That was 50-something? I meant to bring my reading glasses. Oh, no, you're blind.
Hotel occupancy, Todd.
Okay, hotel occupancy. It might be, I'm bad with numbers, I've told you all this, but it says that we are 81%, I think?
38%.
Reserve, or reserve. The fund will have an 81% reserve at the end of fiscal year 2024. So I'm looking at the numbers here, and I feel like we're breaking, breaking even. Our revenues are $4,441,000. Our expenses are $4,700,000. And then our ending fund balance will be $3,388,000. I feel like, are we just breaking even? We're not really seeing revenue from it?
So in the 2024 budget, we do have some one-time costs built in there for the hotel. We don't know what kind of costs are going to be associated with the hotel project, so we do have, I think, 300, what did I have in here? I think there's about $350,000 that's in the budget for that. That's a one-time cost. It's not going to be something that's going to be built in to the operating budget every single year, but we did want to make sure we had it in there just because of the unknown of the project.
Got it. So that break even that I'm thinking...
Yeah, that would have brought you, that would have reconciled you.
That would have brought it up, okay. That's what I was wanting to know there. Got that one then? Okay, let's see. Why is the projection higher? We lost. Page 74, for the personnel cost, says that we, we reduce staff by one, but we budgeted more for personnel cost.
So last year, the budget was 905, this year it's 799.
Oh, I was comparing it to the projected, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's my bad. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you on that. Noticed on page 76, the child safety fund has not been used ever.
So it's, it's actually projected, it was budgeted this year, it may actually get spent by the end of this year. I went ahead and budgeted it for next year because they haven't spent it, but they're actually ordering, it says up here, the, what it can be spent for, they're actually ordering the clocks for the sidewalk crossing guard things on Old Austin Highway. So it's...
Oh, those little ticking clocks?
The timer, yeah.
Yeah, so that will actually use the rest of that fund.
And if I'm remembering, this was, so if anyone needed a car seat, they could come in, they would buy them, right?
Yeah, they have, and, and we'll, we'll install them in the car and, yeah.
Okay, so, and we're going to use the $12,000 for timers.
By they, you mean the PD?
Mm-hmm. They're trained to like put the seat in correctly and...
I just wanted to find who they were.
But this particular fund will buy the car seats and have them available.
All right, thank you on that. Let's move along here. Expenditures, where does the funding come from? Downtown lighting project, is that still being planned by Main Street, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
It's actually being engineered right now.
What page are you on, I'm sorry?
Page 86, really, for the downtown lighting.
Well, they, we just had a conversation about this today. Yes, McCord Engineering is doing the engineering for that. The original plan called for lighting the buildings. The plan that is in progress right now is poles on Main Street, and I am seriously concerned that we've not taken a look at what that's going to actually look like, especially, I mean, is it going to look cluttered? Is it, you know, we've got to cut out sidewalk to do it, they're spaced 80 feet apart from water all the way to Ferry Park. It's going to look very cool, but as you're looking down the street, is it, will that clutter just take away from the whole?
Yeah, there's plenty of clutter on the sidewalks on...
Yeah.
And, and easily damaged, I would think, if you're on, if you're putting, you said poles, right?
They're on poles, they're 18 feet.
Oh, they would be, okay.
And so it's a zigzag that goes across Main. I mean, it sounds cool, but we deviated away from attaching them to buildings for the obvious reasons, right? The buildings are privately owned, I get that. But I don't know that anybody's actually taking the visual impact and the clutter impact into account. And maybe, maybe the, the lighting is worth the clutter, I'm not, I'm not real sure, but we had a little bit of scope creep with that project. BPNL is intended to do the work. It's uplighting of the trees, and it, the uplights are different colors, and so Valentines can be red, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's the lights across Main that give me a little bit of pause, just, again, the downtown power, the downtown folks, you know, they get upset when we don't take into consideration the disruption of what it's going to cause, so. I know we've not had those conversations, because I saw that plan for the first time this morning.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, on page 87, we budgeted some money in here for playground equipment, and then again, the downtown lighting project. Where is the playground equipment going?
So actually, they are actually spending that money, they're, they're spending the 65 that we budgeted this year. I just saw that come through about a week ago.
Yes.
So they're doing shade structures at Ferry...
And Delgado.
And Delgado.
So I knew they were doing the shade structures, but this said playground equipment, so I was like, is that something different?
That's what they consider.
Includes the shade, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And one of the, one of the conversations I had with staff is, in my prior cities, we would partner with the school and let the welding program do the posts with the aisle, and then we would just, you know, go in and do the install in the shade structures, or pretty standard, you can get them from any playground manufacturer, that would cut down on this $65,000 cost that you're going to have before you at the next council meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't talked to the school yet, this was kind of in progress, so between now and next week, we may pull that item off the agenda, and if not, it's at least something looking forward to. There's a lot of things we can do to get creative on how we do our parks.
And cut down costs, yeah, that's great.
Because you could do it to four parks instead of two.
Yeah. All right, so I am on now to departments. Do we have an Assistant City Secretary?
We do, that's Victoria.
Okay, that's Victoria. Okay, thank you on that one. I'm on now, still in departments, we talked about blah, 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 that's not a question. All right, my favorite thing I want to get to, page 117.
117?
Yes, the community funding support. And I want lots of council input here. So it looks like all of our partners are pretty much getting what they got last year, except there's an increase in first responders. Family Crisis Center, Family Crisis Center is getting what they had last year. Everyone looks like is getting what they had last year.
So Councilmember, I'll bring your attention to the Bastrop First Responders.
Uh-huh.
They asked for 11, 905, but what is in the budget is 17, 5. So there are some dollars available there to reallocate.
Okay, thanks. That's just there, they, it was more equipment needed or something. So I do have some questions about this. So the in-kind services, I'm assuming that's for the use of the community, or the convention center?
Correct.
Okay. The price, the amounts are different, so what determines who gets comped, who gets a discount? How is that determined?
So the nonprofits receive, and Kathy, you might want to step up. So the nonprofits, the current policy is the nonprofits receive a standard 15% discounts, I believe. These numbers were based on best estimates that the organization itself said they needed based on how large their event was going to be. Some were larger than others. The reason we took it out of the normal, because this is dollars that can be incorporated into the convention center budget that... the convention center budget that comes out of a different pot of money as opposed to the general fund.
So, is that more beneficial, is it more beneficial to do it that way than to change the percentage of comped or discount and comped? Because here's my thinking. I, I feel like if we're, if the, if the group is doing a fundraiser, then discount, right? If they're doing some type of training, training for the community, awareness type of event, then comp. So, if you're doing a fundraiser and your fundraiser raises two hundred thousand dollars, and we're giving it to you, the center for free, we could've used some of that two hundred thousand dollars to run the facility.
I don't disagree. That's why we have just a fifteen percent standard. Now, what was happening before is, they would request, let's say, an extra two thousand dollars in their budget, and it would come out of general fund, and then it, we, they would turn around and write a check for the use of the facility. So, as opposed to it coming from one bucket into another, let's just increase the wear and tear allowance at the convention center from the hot budget, and take that in kind and make sure we incorporate that. This is assuming that you guys approve what's on here.
Right.
And then, and then Kathy knows, and her staff know, that these, these folks have an essentially paid bill.
I think that, what, what I'm thinking, and, and I mean, I really want input from you guys as well, Kathy, of course, as well, because I'm thinking, I noticed that the Child Advocacy Center doesn't have an amount there. And I know that they asked for it on their application. I don't think they gave a specific amount, but they did ask for a comp, or an in-kind. I'm not, I don't think they said comp, but in-kind. Organizations, in that particular organization, if they were doing a fundraiser, whatever the discount amount is, but if they're training our person, if they're using it to train our personnel, our EMS personnel, our emergency youth staff, I think that it should be comped. Same thing if any of the other organizations are doing. If they're doing a fundraiser, just a standard fundraiser or event, you pay whatever the discounted amount is, but we're not comping your three hundred thousand dollar fundraising thing. I, I think that if they're a nonprofit and they're in the county, twenty-five percent discount, if they're, if they're, if it's, you know, if they're using the convention center and it's not a training, then maybe twenty-five percent instead of, and I'm not good with numbers, so you tell me if it makes more sense to do it the other way. But a twenty-five percent discount if it's not some type of awareness or training event, and then if they're outside of the county using, and they're a nonprofit, maybe ten percent discount. But from what people have told me in the community, that I've gathered from different conversations, if some people pay this amount, they get this amount discounted, some, another group might say, I get this amount. Why is there such a difference in who, how much somebody has to pay to use it? I know if they're using big room, it's more, if they're using the smaller room, it's more, but I've even heard people are paying different prices if it's smaller versus, you know, the entire room. So.
You can address that, Kathy.
And it also depends on the day of the week. There's pricing that's different for Monday through Thursday. We have like, meeting packages, because usually, the, the center doesn't get rented Monday through Thursday. So, if they rent it, then they get a larger discount. The weekends are our prime time, so that's when it usually kicks in the fifteen percent discount. And the reason why there's such a huge discrepancy is, one may just want round tables and they're gonna have a dinner, so we price it as that. One may go, well, we want a stage and a dance floor, and we want two bars. So, all of those amenities add up as well. So, that's why there's such a huge difference in pricing.
And then, have, do we have access to that information to see what those different pricing options are?
Sure.
I'd be interested in seeing that, and, and I'm glad you explained that for anybody who's watching, because it is a little confusing. So, that's kinda my take on it. I, I liked the breakdown, although I would like to see the Child Advocacy Center add it, either some funding there for a discount or comp for their event. I don't know how that works.
So, one of the, I have an email from Cynthia.
Thank you, Kathy.
When we were going back and forth on the, on the advocacy center. So, for that one is law enforcement training for trafficking. And it was gonna be training for not just our personnel, but personnel in the surrounding areas and around the state, actually. So, some of those were gonna generate overnight stays. So, that's an eligible hot fund expense. And so, that was my comment to her, is, let me know what you're going to do. And that's a, a quote-unquote "better pot" than the general fund. And so, that was, that was an exchange we had on seven twenty-five, so.
Okay, good. If y'all were having a conversation, I'll let y'all work it out. That's good to know.
Councilor Lee, can I interject something here real quick?
Yes.
I, I think we need to take a more holistic approach to, to our convention center. I, I think we need to stay on our community funding as opposed to some of their programmatic requirements. And I've taken it, and I've actually excluded three of the requestors, because I didn't feel that that was part, there was no return on their investment, or a little return on our investment for our citizens. And I've divided it up between a cash allocation, between the in-kind allocation. And I've applied a cost figure that, that Mayor Protim Kirkland got from, I believe from Kathy, four thousand dollars for the use of the, of the convention center. And I've applied those monies that we had, both as cash and as in-kind, but we've never had a process to ascertain how much money we were gonna put into, into community funding. And so, we have my estimate of eleven thousand three hundred citizens in the city of Bastrop. And I went back into other cities, as did Mayor Protim Kirkland, to see what they were allocating per citizens, per capita, and came up with an eleven dollar and fifty cent figure per capita, which gave us a, a, a funding level which to work from. We can change that to twelve dollars, we can change it to eleven dollars, we can change it to whatever council deems appropriate. But we need to have a process, and I think this is the start of that process. The only one of the ten remaining requestors that did not request the use of the convention center is, is the first responders. And they're always very specific in their response. It has to do with replacing equipment in some way, shape, or form, or for a specific piece of equipment. But they're the only ones. But there was a total, if we base it on, on four thousand dollars use of the convention center, thirty-six thousand dollars, which leaves a remaining ninety-four thousand dollars to distribute appropriately to the ten remaining requestors, which created a very even process. For example, Long Term Recovery requested ten thousand dollars. They requested the use of the convention center at four thousand, which means that it's a cash allocation to, to that organization of six thousand dollars, because they were including their use of the convention center into the original request. I'll be happy to provide counsel with the, with the spreadsheet to look over before we make a final decision. But I will tell you that we removed Austin Habitat for Humanity, because it reached a very limited population in, last year, I believe, one project. I removed Bastrop Cats. I think cats are important to some people, but it's just not a city service. And I removed Pines and Prairies because that's on the peripheral of our city. That's a great project, I just don't think it's a city project. So, I arbitrarily removed those three, which left a total requested amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand.
That explanation. I definitely think we should all have a copy of that spreadsheet. And then, I guess we would need to decide what that per capita rate should be at a future meeting. And maybe revisit which organizations we feel should get that four thousand dollars, outside of the ones you listed here. So, that, that gives us somewhere to start. The main thing was, I wanted to find out. So, then going, doing a percentage, this would, would, this would remove the whole discount and, no, we would still need a discount in place, because these, this four thousand would be the comped organizations, right?
In-kind.
In-kind, sorry.
And can, can I add something to that? If, if, if they, if one of their programs allows some, some sort of training program, then they need as part of their program to say, we are providing this training, and here, here's our cost to provide that training per student. And that way, we're not getting into the programmatic side of, of their operation, which is something that we have no business in, in my mind.
I, that makes a lot of sense, training. So, that would be something that that would, that they would wanna do next year, right? That we need to make sure that they do for next year.
So, Mayor, for, just so the cat folks don't say you just don't like cats, we are a bird city. And so, because we're a bird city, the trap and release is not a program. I was mistaken. I thought, oh, great, we're a bird city, we should be trapping and releasing. And it is just the opposite. They don't want a trap and release program.
Thank you for providing me that cover, Madam City Manager.
Then, for those who will receive the discount, are we sticking with the, what did you say, City Manager?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent? I think that.
My suggestion would be that, yes, fifteen percent. Kathy has handed a bill on necessary repairs to the convention center, and it exceeds seven hundred thousand dollars, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Can you send that spreadsheet my way as well?
Oh, certainly.
Okay, so I think I just have a few more, and that was the biggest piece, performance measures.
So, can I, can I clarify what we're doing with this, only because we will be bringing back a final budget on the twelfth of September?
Well, we need to see the spreadsheet.
Yeah. Yeah. So, will, will this be discussed on the twenty-second? Okay, awesome. That's perfect.
Hopefully, we'll get the spreadsheet before then.
Wonderful.
Oh, I do have one question.
I have a baby final budget to get out.
On page, you'll be here one more minute.
On the twenty-seventh.
Page one eighteen. I was adding up the event funding for line item, other charges, which, if I read right, includes event funding, support funding, the PHI medical, and the in-kind. And I came up with two seventy-eight, seven forty-five, and that line item for other charges says two seventy-eight, four hundred. So, I don't know what I was looking at, the, my number.
What page are you on?
One eighteen.
Page one eighteen.
Expenditures by division.
Okay, sorry, I was still writing. It's detailed somewhere.
On page one sixteen, I.
Yeah.
Think, but the, unless I'm adding my, my calculator's wrong, I'm off.
Well, there may be something else in that number. This is the big pieces that's in that number. That's not all that's in that number.
Yeah, it says event, page one sixteen says event funding, support funding, PHI medical, in-kind, as other charges, two seventy-eight, four hundred. But all of those added up from page one sixteen come to two seventy-eight, seven forty-five. So, I don't know where I was, I don't know if I was off, or if the number was off.
Okay, I'll check it.
And thank you for bringing up the PHI medical contract, because we do have to bring that back to the council for consideration.
Thank you. And then, the only other, I think, page one twenty-seven might be my last question. No, it looks like I have one more. Page one twenty-seven, where it says personnel costs for volunteer, what does that include if they're volunteers?
We pay a stipend per call.
Per call? Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
For our volunteers.
I have to tell my, my child that. He's like, it's volunteer, I don't get paid. Well, you can get a stipend.
No, they pay stipend, yeah.
Okay.
Quarterly, yep.
Oh, page one forty. Just, I wanted to understand, why was it, why is it that the, the Texas Municipal Retirement System, the one-time payment came out of the water, on wastewater funds?
So, they have employees.
Everybody pays their own part.
So, we, what we did was, we figured out the general fund amount, the water wastewater amount, the BPNL amount, EDC had an amount.
Every, okay.
They all did their per annum share of that month sum.
Okay. I don't know, I was thinking that all of it was coming out of that fund. And I was like, why, why did they pick that?
Oh, not all of it, just their portion.
This is their portion. Got it. All right, and I did find, okay, is this complete build-out for the, oh, yes, page one forty-three. So, the Opera House, one forty-seven, eight, one forty-seven, eight, eighteen. Is that the complete build-out for the Opera House, or is that just what we're giving them for, to contribute?
That's just our portion.
Okay. Just wasn't sure. All right, and I'm done.
We know you read the packet.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Thank you for going through it.
Yes.
I know it's like watching paint dry, but it's important.
I actually started last night about six. I picked it up, and I was like, oh, let me glance over this. And I, and then I remembered, oh, no, the meeting's tomorrow. So, I was up till about midnight and part of today. Thank you.
Council, Mayor Protim Kirkland.
On the capital improvement sections, one thing I'll note is that the projects, whenever they went beyond about two lines or so, it went to an ellipse, dot, 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 and.
Yeah, we'll fix that in the final document.
Yeah, just for future, yeah.
For some reason, they export that way, I don't know why.
Fun.
We have to go in and manipulate the PDF, so.
Okay. The riverbank stabilization, nine hundred and twelve thousand. I've never really known even when.
We have a grant out, we're waiting for a grant on that. That's actually been a project we've submitted several grants for.
Okay.
It's the erosion of the river.
And, so we have an outstanding grant?
We have a grant that, yes, we've applied for, we're waiting on funding.
Okay. And, do, do you know the amount of that grant?
Yeah, not off the top of my head. But you know what? All the grant stuff is in the transparency, on the portal, on the website. So, it's all out there.
And so, we estimate the nine hundred and twelve thousand is the match, or?
It's our, it's, it's total contract, it's, it's total. So, even if we get a grant, we're still putting the total cost of the project in here.
This is DR forty-four eighty-five and the brick. Both of those are bank stabilization and Gil's project, right?
We've, we've submitted for two different, yeah, waiting for one of them to hopefully come through.
Okay.
We don't just put our match as the total project, though. We put the total project, and it might be funded by different sources.
Okay. And then, capital project requests itemized for twenty twenty-four, page one fifty-one, there's a quiet zone, seven twenty-two, seven fifty. What is the, the location for that quiet zone?
It is not the entire, it's not the entire segment, it's only this segment that's required by the hotel.
Yeah, this is just this year's amount, and this is just probably the engineering piece of it.
Okay. The, my concern with that, Miss City Manager, is that anytime you pass through an unprotected intersection, they have to blow the horn a quarter of a mile prior through a quarter of a mile after, which is gonna put them blowing the horn all the way to Farm Street. And so, you're not gonna get the desired effect from the quiet zone under those rules. So, we may have to do something differently if our goal is to make Farm Street to Chestnut quiet for a hotel project. Thank you, sir.
I have an email today from Union Pacific, actually, so.
Well, she's looking at that. Any other, Councilmember Crouch, your light was on earlier. Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just, City Manager, can you just explain one more time? I, I had a different interpretation of what the downtown building lighting was, because I thought that there was a plan at some point to, and I know there's money in the budget for it, so I'm not concerned about the budget item, but I thought there was a plan and an engineered study that was running the electrical on top of the buildings, and all the, we had permission from the building on. all the, we had permission from the building owners to do that and that all the lights were going to be kind of trailing the, the top of the building. Is that plan gone?
Yes. So, um, that was the original plan, I think, that was discussed a couple of years ago. There was issue with the, some of the building owners giving access, granting access, and then there was also the obvious liability if something happened when the lights failed. So that, that plan was abandoned at some point and McCord took up the plan with the, um, with the poles of the lights zigzagging across the street.
And I don't think that plan was ever engineered, it was just...
A thought.
It was just the original plan of the project.
Okay, I guess I just hadn't been updated from the original plan.
I think there was also some power issues with getting power. I think there was also some power issues.
Yeah, I, I can remember, uh, Assistant City Manager Gleason talking us through that previously, but I thought it had gained traction in that we were doing that, so my, my bad for not, not knowing. I, I don't know that the, I know there's budget money, but I don't know that, I think it would be way too busy if we put crisscross on the street, but that's just a personal opinion, not an anything. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions for the CFO or the City Manager relative to this presentation? I think it's notable to say that although our, our property, our average taxable home set value has increased by 12.8%, our, uh, our tax burden has only increased by 11.1%. So congratulations on y'all attempting to hold that down and preparing a really, really good budget. Uh, Madam City Manager, have we provided you with further guidance? Do you have questions for council?
Um, I do, and this relates to Councilmember Kirkland's request of the no new revenue rate. So originally, as the budget is proposed, there is an increase, although it's less than the, um, three and a half percent, I believe it's 2.14, something like that percent in the budget. And that left 83,0785 to work with within the budget in case there was any last-minute requests or additions that needed to be included in the budget, one-time funding mechanisms, for example. If we go to the no new revenue rate, um, the only amount is available is $7,745 and that's an estimate. And my only caution about going to the no new revenue rate is, as you know, we have a ceiling every single year. And the more you keep that floor, the harder it is going to be in the tougher years to catch up and be able to do all of the maintenance and keep up with the expected level of service that our residents require. We tried to keep it as stable as possible using last year's rate and yes, the valuations are increased and so yes, there should be extra money to work with, but inflation and the cost of doing business itself is higher. But that being said, there's room in the budget to do it.
Any follow-up question, Mayor Pro Tim? Good, thank you. Again, thank y'all for the presentation, we appreciate it. Madam City Manager, I'm, I'm going to ask one more time, you, you go the discussion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, folks. We will now move to, uh, item number three, citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
All right, we're taking care of item number three, moving on to item number four. Items for individual consideration, there are none.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, there, am I looking at the wrong one? Perhaps I am. Forgive me, I grabbed the wrong one, please forgive me, wow. We've moved to, uh, item 3A, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2023-27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for and establishing the procedures for November 7, 2023, special election for the purpose of a combined ballot proposition, reducing the economic development sales and use tax and adopting the street maintenance sales and use tax and providing an effective date. Madam City Secretary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item came before you at our previous meeting, um, and so we're bringing it back for the second reading to call the election for the November 7, um, special called election for the tax rate. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for our City Secretary? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
So are we approving the one with the amended wording?
Yes, sir, that's in your packet, the, the wording has been amended, uh, per your motion.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So a motion to approve then?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Councilmember Crouch, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you will read the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion passes unanimously. We will move to item number 3B, consider action to approve resolution number R2023-129 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for an establishing of procedures for November 7, 2023, special election for the purpose of a ballot proposition authorizing the sale by the city of certain park property being a portion of Mayfest Park and providing an effective date. Madam City Secretary.
Mayor and Council, this item is, um, an add-on to the ballot for the November 7. It's an additional proposition for the sale of a property and so it will be Proposition Number Two, I believe, on the ballot.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the City Secretary? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
So, uh, I feel like we need to have a public discussion about this.
Yes, yes.
Do you have a map?
Um, I will send one to Colin this second. Um, while, while I'm doing that, yes, absolutely, this is not, um, this is not the sale of the park, um, this is cleaning up the boundary lines. We have some things in the park, for example, our entrance into the park is on somebody else's piece of property. So it is just cleaning up those boundaries, um, receiving property from the neighboring property owner to even out the split. The city remains whole, we do not lose any property, and it is also straightening out the drainage, uh, area. Last council meeting was what day?
It was...
August the 8th? Um, the reason is before you because, um, park land requires voter approval to be sold. And even though the city's ending up whole with an equal-to-equal, um, parcel and area, it still requires voter approval. So what is on the screen before you is a, um, is a map that shows the property swap. You can see to the, um, right is existing property and the area in the pink to the north shows where our entrance into the rodeo grounds is on somebody else's property, it, to the neighboring property. The area to the left makes that alignment, it puts that drive into our side of the parcel and it swaps the area in purple with the area in green. The area in purple is where the existing drainage pond is. Some of our property is also draining onto, uh, neighboring property and that landowner has no access to the bottom portion of their property because of that pond. They'd have to come over to our property to reach the bottom portion of their property. And so if you scroll down, um, Colin, you'll see it is a, it is a one-to-one, there is no, uh, net loss to the city.
So, just kind of in a summary, and this is not necessarily for anyone in this room, but so that it's well understood, uh, we're not trying to sell a part of Mayfest Park, even though that's kind of what it says we're doing. Um, what we're doing is, as the City Manager said, the land that the driveway is on for Mayfest Park is not currently owned by the city. And so we are simply cleaning that up and we are going to acquire that land from the current landowner and in exchange, we are going to sell them a small piece of property that allows them to fix some of their drainage issues and then in return for that, they're giving us another piece of, of land. We have a 1.93 positive acres comes to the city after this, uh, transaction is fully finished. Is that more or less correct?
That is correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
And to piggyback on that, I would just like to, if we could scroll down just a tiny bit on the section on that side where the green is, C is much more usable land than B because B is a pond, so we are actually going to have much more positive, uh, gain from that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just wanted to thank the City Manager for that explanation and Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland for asking the question because it looked like we were selling Mayfest Park on the agenda and, uh, it is just cleaning up the boundary. So we're going to end up with a lot cleaner boundary, everybody's going to get better use of their land and, uh, it has to go to, uh, the public for a vote in order to do this, so, um, everybody, please go vote so we can have a cleaned up boundary on our, on our property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett?
And I just wanted to make sure to, to get clear on the, on the wording of the, on the ballot. Are we able or not? I don't, I think the, the answer was that we are not able to say that this is a net gain or, you know, that we're...
Trade-off.
Right, that we're not losing space or do we just have to say, hey, is it okay for us to sell this part even though we're acquiring more?
Yeah, essentially what you said in the latter, uh, all of the language has to be very much factual and can be advocating for, uh, one way or another. So that's how, um, Proposition B is stated and it provides the language about the exchange, um, so that it kind of narrows or tailors the bids that will come in from that. It'll still have to go through the bidding process after it receives its vote.
Thank you. Just want to make sure everybody understands. Thank you, sir. All right, Council, uh, we know what we're voting on, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Crouch, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-130 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for an establishing of procedures for November 7, 2023, special election for the purpose of a ballot proposition authorizing the sale by the city of certain park property being a portion of Ferry Park and providing an effective date. Again, we need to have a public discussion on that.
Yes, sir, Colin is about to pull a map up. This is also, um, this is a similar issue, the city has the parcels numbered at 31578 and 62647, they were dedicated to the city for use as park land. Again, we cannot dispose or swap of that property without a public election. Property 31587 is this triangular square and also this right-of-way that has access off of the Service Road, Highway 71, Service Road. So we would essentially be swapping two landlocked pieces of property for a property that has access for future development of some expansion of Ferry Park, um, across the way. The property that the city is, um, giving up per se, that's probably the bad choice of words, uh, is approximately five acres, the property 31587 parcel is a little over six acres. So there is a net to the city. Um, there is some of 31587 that is in the flood, uh, way, the latter part that's closer to the river, we are aware of that, but again, believe it makes a very good connection to Ferry Park and access onto 71 where we wouldn't have to go acquire any additional right-of-way as we would have needed to get access off of 31578 and 62647.
So Council, any questions for the City Manager?
Um, the Proposition C is incomplete in the packet and when would our second reading for this one be?
Well, uh, because it's a resolution, it, it would only require one, um, what part of that, let's see, is...
It does require a second reading.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what Alan, um, informed us, our city attorney, that it only requires one reading.
Okay.
Okay. We asked.
If you're wondering what the difference is between, um, that first item that required an ordinance, because of the, uh, tax code, it literally requires you to do an ordinance, so that's why it has two readings as opposed to these last two, which are resolutions, which is authorized by...
Yeah, that's where my question came from.
Oh, got it, got it, I, I hear what you're asking now, sorry.
Yeah, I like the language in the resolution, says City Council's intended purpose is relative to the exchange of adjacent property from suitable park land. Uh, any other questions, uh, for the City Manager or our city attorney?
Well, we don't have a functional proposition yet.
Ann is going to do copy.
Oh, the incomplete on Proposition C, I see. Look, do you think that we could, um, complete the Proposition C language so that, uh, we can bring it back tomorrow?
We did not post this for the agenda tomorrow.
Yeah, it would be too late for it tomorrow, but, um, you could make a motion to approve it with the, uh, amended language or complete language?
Is that the corrected language she's passing out? It would be, it would be helpful to read that into the record.
Well, there's the completed language right there.
Yes, please.
And for clearly, the, the, uh, completed language is, uh, Proposition C, shall the City of Bastrop, Texas be authorized to sell certain park, pu, park property located across Colorado River from Ferry Park, more specifically being that certain park property, property, totaling approximately 5.01 acres of land, more or less, located at 105 Perkins Street, Bastrop, Texas, comprised of Lot 11 FR and Lot 12 FR, Block 4 Colorado Estates, Bastrop County, Texas, through a public notice and bidding process consistent with state law where the total value of the bid is equal to or greater than the appraised fair market value of the portion of the park property to be sold, including at minimum in exchange for at least 6.2 acres, more or less, of land contiguous to existing city park property.
Motion to approve Proposition C as read.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, a second by Councilmember Meyer, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion passes, passes unanimously. I've already hit citizen comments, we've determined there's nobody here to provide such a comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and I have a second, we stand adjourned, thank y'all.